In reality, sprinklers add very little to the overall cost of the home, roughly 1%. If you're building a new home, adding sprinklers would cost less than $5 per month for the life of your home. For the price of your countertops, carpeting, or lawn sprinklers, you can afford to protect your family from a devastating fire by having residential fire sprinklers installed.
Shall we please rise? I'd like to ask Leonard Cook, St. John the Theologian in Cape Girardeau. Once again, welcome. And thank you for being here to give us our indication.
Lord, our God, we pause before we begin this meeting to acknowledge that we can do nothing without thy help and guidance. We ask that you would be present in a special way during this meeting to guide each member of the council and each member of the audience to keep the good of the citizens and thy will in mind. We ask that that would be especially merciful to those who are suffering from the flood, to all the sick and suffering of this community, and shed your blessings upon this council, those here present, the employees and citizens of this community. We give thee thanks for the many benefits that we have received from thee, and we give thee all the glory, honor, praise, and worship to the Father, to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, both now and ever and unto the ages of ages. Amen.
Amen. Now if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. I'll call to order this session of the Cape Girardeau City Council. This is our May 1st, 2017 meeting. Thank you all for being here. Rule call, please.
Wayne Bowen.
Here.
Bob Fox.
Here.
Robbie Gard.
Here.
Shelley Moore.
Here.
Harry Rediger.
Here.
Joseph Azur.
Here.
Counsel next order of business, adoption of the agenda. So moved. So moved by Gunn.
Second.
Seconded by Fox. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? One presentation tonight, and it's kind of local, because it's Local Government Week. So Scott, you'll come up here with me.
Go ahead, I'll follow you.
Our local government means so much to us, to all of our citizens, from city manager to all of our leadership, to all of our staff, and to include all of our council, and really including all of our citizens also. So this proclamation is for Local Government Week, which is declared this week. Now I'll read. Whereas local government is the backbone of our democracy and the bedrock of our political system, and a testimony to liberty, freedom, and the right to elected self-government; and whereas citizens of Missouri rely upon local governments to deliver essential community services, such as clean water, police, and fire protection; and whereas the continued success of our local governments in meeting the needs of our citizens is a key element in maintaining the overall quality of life in Missouri; and whereas the rich tapestry of local governments in Missouri is represented by thousands of hard-working citizen officials, many of whom serve without compensation; and whereas through education and awareness the importance of local governments can be communicated to citizens, state legislators, and the news media; and whereas recognition of local governments' accomplishments will give Cape Girardeau residents a better understanding of how essential the local services are provided; whereas establishing an annual Local Government Week would focus attention on the need for strong, independent, and active local government in this state, and recognize the valuable contributions made by residents serving their communities in public office. Now therefore being resolved, I, Harry Rediger, Mayor of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, do hereby proclaim this week, April 30th through May 6th, 2017, as Local Government Week, and witness thereof. Present to our city manager.
Thank you.
And I will, but Scott, comment on the theme.
Thank you. I'm going to go up here if I can follow a few notes that I have. But first of all, I want to thank the council for their services. They talked about people who serve with very little or no compensation. That is the calling of a council member and a mayor, is to serve with very little compensation. And we thank you for your time that you put in for that, and the leadership that you provide our local government. It's an honor to represent and to accept this for not only you all, but for our employees, whether they rescue a little boy or girl from the pool, and then later on teach them how to swim with swim lessons, or they run into a burning building, and then later replace the smoke detector, where they perform CPR, advanced medical treatment, and then also rescue the dog to boot and give them CPR, whether they respond to shots fired, or run toward the chaos instead of away from it. And then they also are the ones that step and help and help a little boy get a bike back, whether they plow snow late at night, or spend their entire weekend wading through the floodwaters. These are all your friends, your neighbors. They also help people when they come in here to pay their bills and to get a permit and help them apply for a job, or many times the people in this office help people find their way to somewhere else because they're lost. No matter what the case, it is your local government officials and your local government workers, the city workers, who care for their community and who just have a heart for service, and they do it day in and day out. And they don't do it because of the money, you know, yes, they are compensated, but they do it because they have a calling on their life that says that they want to be a public servant for local citizens and their friends and their neighbors and make a difference in their life. So I say today, I want to thank them for all they do.
Okay, thank you.
Next, communication reports, and I will report on a very busy weekend coming up. This is the weekend of our, the coming of our opening of the sportsplex that has been underway for so long and so anticipated. So our little fundraising event on Thursday night ties in tennis, 6 o'clock. Open house Saturday from the public, 11 to 2, with a ribbon cutting at 11 o'clock. Understand from Julia that it will be very crowded that day. Julia, anything to say about sportsplex, or parks, or, you've had a lot going on here with rains and parks, and a couple cancellations of Friends of the Park Day, where's that heading? Anything new to add, other than what I've just said?
The nature obviously has often striding on us recently, so it has been a bit challenging, but that's why we have a new indoor sports complex, and so we're very proud to be able to cut the ribbon on that facility.
Okay, very good.
Rain or shine.
Rain or shine. Friday, 6:45, Osage Bike-to-Work Day. Saturday at Arena, Gus Macker Basketball. And Saturday, 11 to 2, on Main Street, the Block Party, as we celebrate the opening of the renovation of Main Street from Independence to Broadway. So a lot going on Thursday through Saturday, this weekend in Cape Girardeau. The other thing, as I discussed at council, is our community foundation and executive director and board have asked for support from council with a liaison member to that board, and I've asked Robbie Gard to assume that, and he's obliged. Our community foundation is still very new, and has a full board, and looking forward to that becoming increasingly important in our community as we move ahead. Other communications?
I wanted to add one, Mayor. This week, kudos to Will Gorm and the Show Me Center staff. I found out that with Chris Stapleton concert, his staff did great, and all of our hotels in Cape Girardeau were completely filled Friday and Saturday night. So it's stuff like that that bring people in from outside the area, and his staff did phenomenal.
Okay. Staff?
Nothing further.
Okay, we have two public hearings tonight. Number one, a public hearing to consider a request for a special use permit for a vehicle fueling station at 1320 West Cape Rock Drive. Public hearing is open for anyone to appear before the council. Yes?
My name is Pam Davidson with Keystone Design, and I'm representing the owners for this project. And basically what we're asking for is, in 1999, they bought the property, and in 2014, they rezoned it to an NC zone with the special use permit for the fueling station. With it being dated and bringing it up to new regulations and things, they decided to renovate the facility. With this renovation, we are asking for a special use permit for the rezoning. It will not be a 24-hour facility, it will be closed at 10 and open up again in the morning. We are asking for variance on some of the landscaping, existing properties, very small, trying to get everything to fit on it, in order to compensate for some of that buffer yard area that we need. We're putting in a fence that we know will cut down a lot of the headlights for the cars and the lighting on the property along the existing apartments. It will have a drive-through, which will bring it up to a lot of the convenience stores that we have in the area now. So we don't believe it will affect anything that's currently being used in the area right now, but just updating it for the use. That's pretty much what the project.
Any questions, Ms. Davidson? Okay, thank you. Public hearing still open, anyone to appear before the council on this issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and council, if we move to item 17 and new ordinances. And this is bill number 17, page 58, an ordinance granting a special use permit to LL Investment LLC for purposes of constructing, maintaining, and operating a vehicle fueling station at 1320 West Cape Rock Drive in the City and County of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, first reading. So moved by Fox. And seconded by Bowen. Any discussion?
Mark my vote and abstain due to financial.
Abstention of Mr. Gard, Councilman Gard, on item 17. Be a very good addition to that area with new construction there. Any other discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, second public hearing is a public hearing to consider a request to rezone property at 550 North Silver Springs Road from C2 Highway Commercial to R4 Medium Density, Multifamily Residential. Public hearing is open for anybody to appear before the council. Yes, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Jason Maddox with Mako Development Company, 111 North Main in Clarkton, Missouri. We purchased this land, a trek at the intersection of Silver Springs and Spruce, a few years back to develop senior multifamily housing. The project is doing very well. We subsequently scheduled a meeting with the city to discuss a second phase. At that point, we learned that it had, well, when we bought it, it was zone C2, which at that time allowed senior multifamily. Since that time, your zoning definitions have changed, and it no longer allows senior multifamily, so that's why we've made this request to rezone it to R4 to allow for the senior multifamily.
Okay, very good.
We'd appreciate it.
Any questions? Public hearing still open, anyone to appear before the council on this issue? None. Counsel, let's go to item 18. Bill number 17, page 59, an ordinance amending chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by changing the zoning of the property located at 550 North Silver Springs Road in City and County of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, from C2 to R4, first reading. So moved by Moore and seconded by Fox. Any discussion? It's been a good project in that area, and serving a need, and this will expand it. Any other discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you. Anyone here to appear before the council on any item that is on the agenda? Yes, sir?
Hello. My name is Israel Geiger. I'm here on behalf of Favors Delivery LLC.
Okay.
Trying to get taxi license for another part of my business, so that's what I'm looking for.
Okay, very good. Any questions of Mr. Geiger? Okay, thank you for being here. Anyone else on the, item on the, JJ?
JJ Lane, 2234 Providence Drive in Jackson, Missouri. Good evening, Mayor Rediger and city council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight in regard to bill 1762. This item is of particular importance to me and the membership I represent. I'm a business representative for Plumbers and Pythers Local 562. But I'm here tonight, not only speaking on their behalf, but I speak for Missouri's construction industry as a whole. To start, this is a significant proclamation that you all are about to make. Can I just see a show of hands of who has read the University of Missouri Kansas City study on the adverse effect of prevailing wage repeal in Missouri? Yeah, I didn't think so. It's about 180 pages long. But I'm just going to touch on a few points made in this study, because I feel that too often the other side of the story, our side, is not being told. In essence, the study says that a repeal of prevailing wage law would cost Missouri residents and their families $294 to $356 million in income. That is a lot of money that could be earned, that is not flowing back into our economy. This would present a couple of problems for our government. One result would be an estimated $5.7 to $6.9 million lost in Missouri sales tax. And our state also stands to lose $17.7 to $21.4 million in income tax revenues. I gave you guys some charts earlier, please take a look at those. It basically says wages and benefits move in a downward direction over time, once the prevailing wage is repealed, as opposed to increased wages and benefits for our workers if the law remains intact. Looking at all of that, don't those numbers kind of speak for themselves? Don't you think, before making such a bold proclamation that could influence the laws of our state, that you should strive to have a better understanding of how this law works, and the potential negative effects it could have on our citizens, our businesses, and our economy? Senator Wayne Wallingford did. He talked to businesses in the construction industry and heard their concerns. Shouldn't you hear the concerns that were expressed to him by business owners, both union and non-union? One of their major concerns is our projects publicly funded by our tax dollars will end up in the hands of out-of-state contractors and out-of-state workers, who will take their earnings back home rather than spending them in our local economy. One question I would like to ask is, how much do you think you'll save on construction projects if the prevailing wage law is repealed, like percent-wise? The average percent of a project's total cost for labor is around 23%. So if the labor was all donated, kind of like our building trades unions did at the Pavilion in Capelaw Park, the most you would save would be 23%. That's if the labor was completely free. If a contractor uses workers and pays them 1/3 less than prevailing wage, the potential saving is less than 8%. But in fact, the University of Missouri Kansas City study found the construction costs were actually higher per square foot in non-pervailing wage states, probably due to less efficiency and poor quality due to less trained workers. Speaking of quality and training, our contractors do not just throw folks out on job sites where they immediately earn the prevailing wage. They have a lot of minimum criteria they have to meet first. They have to have a high school diploma or equivalency, and they also have to have some type of secondary education, such as like from Baderat, Tulsa Welding School, or the Career Technology Center here in Cape. This is just to get a foot in the door. Then the workers, most workers are pre-apprentice for at least a year, amassing 2,000 hours of on-the-job training, and 100 hours of night school. Once a worker is accepted into the actual apprenticeship, they are required to complete a five-year program consisting of 18 40-hour weeks of training, 500 hours of night school. Combine that with 10,000 hours of on-the-job training during that time, before a worker can earn 1 hour at the prevailing wage rate. That's a lot of training. Lastly, think about all the benefits of having a properly paid workforce, who have fringe benefits, so they can have insurance and take care of their family's healthcare needs, including dental and vision. Eliminating the prevailing wage will erode some of these benefits, as contractors and workers will inevitably engage in a race to the bottom. Is that what we want in our community? Is that what will lift us up? I don't think so. The construction industry doesn't think so. Workers, owners, union, non-union, none of them want this. And you guys are about to make this proclamation. Bottom line, prevailing wage will produce more harm than good, and I urge you to remove this item from the consent agenda, and at least seek out some more information before moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. What questions, JJ? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here before the council on any item that is on the agenda? Okay, Eric, if you'll take us through the consent agenda.
Number 17, page 46, an ordinance accepting a permanent sanitary sewer easement from South K Inc. for the Dollar Tree project located at 201 South Kings Highway in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, and ordering accepting a permanent sanitary sewer easement from South K Inc. for the Dollar Tree project located at 201 South Kings Highway in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 17, page 47, an ordinance pending Schedule A of Section 26-228 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by establishing speed limit along and in the Independent Street, Gordonville Road, and East Rodney Drive Roundabout, an ordinance pending Schedule A of Section 26-228 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by establishing a speed limit along and in the Independent Street, Gordonville Road, and East Rodney Drive Roundabout. Number 17, page 48, an ordinance pending Schedule C of Section 26-121 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by repealing stop signs at the intersections of Independent Street, Gordonville Road, and East Rodney Drive, an ordinance pending Schedule C of Section 26-121 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by repealing stop signs at the intersections of Independent Street, Gordonville Road, and East Rodney Drive. Number 17, page 49, an ordinance pending Schedule K of Section 26-121 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by establishing yield signs at the Independent Street, Gordonville Road, and East Rodney Drive Roundabout, an ordinance pending Schedule K of Section 26-121 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by establishing yield signs at the Independent Street, Gordonville Road, and East Rodney Drive Roundabout. Number 17, page 53, an ordinance pending Schedule J of Section 26-135 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by establishing a one-way street in the Independent Street, Gordonville Road, and East Rodney Drive Roundabout, an ordinance pending Schedule J of Section 26-135 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by establishing a one-way street in the Independent Street, Gordonville Road, and East Rodney Drive Roundabout. Number 17, page 50, an ordinance pending Schedule G of Section 26-249 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by amending two-hour parking along a portion of Fountain Street, an ordinance pending Schedule G of Section 26-249 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by amending two-hour parking along a portion of Fountain Street. Number 17, page 54, an ordinance pending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by changing the zoning of property located at 201, 205, 207, 209, 211, 213, and 215 South Kings Highway in the City and County of Cape Girardeau, Missouri from C2 to PD and approving the preliminary development plan for proposed commercial development. An ordinance pending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by changing the zoning of property located at 201, 205, 207, 209, 211, 213, and 215 South Kings Highway in the City and County of Cape Girardeau, Missouri from C2 to PD and approving the preliminary development plan for proposed commercial development. Number 17, page 56, resolution authorizing city manager to execute a subordination and grant agreement with the First Missouri State Bank of Cape County for property located at 921 Bloomfield Street in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 17, page 62, a resolution of support from the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri for Missouri Hospital 104 and the 99th Missouri General Assembly or other legislation to repeal the current prevailing wage laws of the state of Missouri.
Counsel, you've heard the consent agenda through item 13. Do you have a motion for approval?
So moved.
So moved by Gard. And seconded by Bowen. Any discussion?
Terry, I'd like to add one point.
For me, the repeal of prevailing wage has to do with a fair wage, not government-dated wage. There's many street prepared issues that we have going on, and there are numerous projects that we've got going on. We have to try to be able to stretch that dollar any way we can, with our friends at the county commission, with our friends at the Cape Girardeau School Board, and hopefully with us. I hope that Wayne Wallingford will rethink his stance on this.
Okay, any other discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And now Eric, if you'll read an item removed from a consent agenda, number 14.
Number 17, page 60, resolution announcing selection of a proposal from Motorola Solutions for PT-25 radio system for the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to enter into negotiations with Motorola Solutions for an agreement and to present the agreement to the city council for approval contingent upon obtaining a satisfactory agreement with the state of Missouri Department of Public Safety.
So moved. So moved by Bowen.
Second.
Seconded by Gunn. Any discussion?
Appreciate the discussion we had about this in the study session, and I'm confident this is the best way to look forward to both our departments to mature their operability and both efficiency to be fulfilled.
I'd like to also compliment staff for their diligent work on this over the last months, many months, and more to come as we move toward negotiation. A very important item that is on our agenda as we move forward. This gives the, authorizes the staff to move ahead with negotiations. So an important step. Any other comments? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? New ordinances, number 15, bill number 17, page 55, an ordinance amending Schedule C of Section 26-121 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by establishing stop signs at the intersections along Camelback Road, Randall Drive, Sapphire Lane, and Cheetah Lane, first reading. So moved by Fox.
Second.
And seconded by Moore. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
As opposed? Number 16, bill number 17, page 57, an ordinance approving the record plat of a minor subdivision of Lot B of Cape West Crossings Phase 2 amended, first reading. So moved by Fox.
Second.
Seconded by Bowen. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? And no appointments this evening. Other business, consideration of a taxicab license application submitted by Israel Geiger. And you know, in your months that we have had the... Do I come up? No, no, no. No, we're just doing our bit, thank you. That our chief of police has submitted a recommendation for denial, so we've got either may have a motion for approval or denial of this, of this application. Do you have a motion?
I'd like to hear the man speak.
Do I have a motion?
I'd like to hear the man speak. If he'd like to go.
Okay.
Okay. My name is Israel Geiger. I started a business like two years ago called Favors. And that's basically what we do. We go around the city and we do favors for people. People that don't have insurance, that can't afford to get back and forth home to, let's say, Papa Bluff, Sykes Town, Tennessee, just different places, through St. Francis Southeast. And I'm just here to try to get the taxi part of, I'm just trying to do everything right. So I figured I'd come through my city and take the necessary steps, and I'm just happy to be here and meet you guys anyway, so either way it goes, I'm going to be. Yeah, but that's basically it.
I talked with him, Geiger, and he has a contract with...
St. Francis Southeast. I do a lot of good work around the city that people don't know about, but can do time, and will hear a lot about me. Good things too, so I'm just, you know, like, I'm just trying to... I'm just, you know, like, I'm just trying to, basically what I want to do is run the business, but in order for me to run it right, I have to have licenses. So that's what I'm ready to do. I'm ready to try to get my licenses. And I already have a license for one part of my business. This is like another part of my business. And this is a big part of my business because, like, four weeks ago, I just quit my job. I'd like to do this full-time, so I'm hoping and praying that everything goes right. This is my first time up here, so I'm just, if there's any questions...
You said you have contracts with both of the hospitals?
Yes, sir.
You have contracts with them to operate a taxi business?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Are the hospitals aware of the concerns that the police department brought up?
I don't, I don't know. I mean, we've never discussed them. And how I got those was just, I met some good people, and one of them was the CEO of St. Francis, so that's how I got that. I mean, like, I had to take care of her for like six weeks, and I don't know. I mean, I'm just trying to do it right, so.
Are you aware of why?
Yeah, I understand why, like, as far as my criminal record?
Yes.
Yes, sir. So I mean, like, and like, as far as that goes, I mean, I read you guys', and I read the ordinance on it, and it was like, if I hadn't been in trouble in like ten years or something like that, it was section, what, fifteen to oh eight? Yeah, and I've done everything right. I've done the background checks, I filled out the stuff through Highway Patrol, the right car insurance for the vehicles and everything. So I mean, like, I've done everything right. This is, this is like my last step just to get the approval. Everything else I've done so far, so. But I, but I totally understand why, but I haven't been in trouble in over, yeah, fifteen, almost fifteen years, man. I'm thirty-eight, I'll be forty in two years.
I thought there was a conviction last year.
No, no, no.
A misdemeanor in January of two thousand and sixteen?
For what? What was that for?
Trespassing at the casino?
What was to address it?
Casinos.
Oh, okay, well, yeah, that was, that was just a honest mistake, and I mean, like, I took care of that. I mean, I mean, like, I took care of that. I mean, there's...
The problem, well, the problem is that you didn't take care of it because you're convicted of it. So I don't know that you should say you took care of it.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You either pled guilty...
Yeah, I pled, yeah, yeah. I pled, yeah. Yeah, I pled guilty to it, so, I mean, that was just like a misunderstanding. I had got kicked off the boat, and then I had went back after like three or four years later. I didn't know that you were supposed to write a note and get permission before you go back.
Well, sir, I don't, I don't need to know the detail.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I was asking, you said you have contracts with the hospital. They expect you to be licensed.
Yes.
Do they know about these issues, which is why it wasn't recommended for approval, which is why you're here before us today?
Not that I know of.
Because they expect us to check those things for them.
Yeah, and I understand, and I promise you, I have recommendations. I have phone numbers of people that you can call that, and, I mean, like, for every part of the hospital, and they will speak highly of me, I promise you guys. If you guys give me a chance, I promise you, I've been doing, I mean, like, I've been doing a lot to get to this road. And like I said, that's why I'm here, that's why I went through the whole process. I mean, I never thought my criminal record would affect this part of my life on me trying to do the right thing, like, trying to run a business. I never, this is a million years, but, you know, I'm an adult, and I'm, I'm ready to just move on with it and try to do the right thing. And I got a lot of great ideas, and if you guys give me a chance, I'll be able to, with the right help and the right people behind me, I'll be able to bring jobs to the community and do a little bit more stuff. I got a commercial that's going to start running Saturday, you know, like, I got good things just going on, but like I said, I just need my city behind me.
Are there any other questions of Geiger? Okay, thank you, and I'd like to ask chief, any comments?
Certainly, and just kind of explain the process. When, when we get a taxi cab license, we're pretty much tasked with just looking at the criminal history and making a recommendation based off of that. So relative to contracts that he may or may not have with other businesses, I would have no way of knowing that at all. All I've done is just looked at the criminal history and just based it off of that. So that's, that's pretty much the extent of my comments on that. The recommendation's based solely on the felony convictions and the criminal trespass of last year.
Okay? Counsel?
If I could ask you, Blair, is there in your mind a difference between felony that had been last year versus sixteen, seventeen years ago? Is that, is that a substantial difference to you?
That, that would be a difference to me, yes. It would, would kind of put me over the edge on the, the denial or recommendation for denial was, yeah, those felonies were back in the past, but then we've got a criminal trespass very recently at the casino. And if you're running a taxi, I'm going to assume that you're going to be getting a lot of phone calls to come to the casino to pick people up, and if you're not allowed at the casino, how do, how do we regulate that?
And the ordinance doesn't prohibit someone with those convictions from holding a license, however, is that...
That's correct.
Counsel? Charlie? Okay.
Assistant, I know Israel for quite a while. He's really, he's really a good kid. Now, everyone in here probably have made a mistake in their youth. Just a simple mistake. The guy's been working real hard and turning himself around ever since he got out of trouble and paid his debt to society over thirteen years ago. He's trying to raise a family, get on his feet. He's not none of these guys going out here selling drugs, pushing dopes, shooting up the community, terrorizing people. He's none of that, he's none of that. So here's a guy really trying, struggling, really trying to provide a service for the community and his family. Just based on that at all, just please get a man an honest break and opportunities. He's not asking for a handout. Like I say, he's been in those troubles, pretty squeaky clean, nice kids, nice family, a lot of compliments from elderly people, senior citizens, and he do a lot of free stuff. He don't even always charge these people. Like, maybe two weeks ago, I seen him go get a senior lady's medicine for free because she couldn't get out. So his business doesn't always just charge. Sometime, he just do it because that's the kind of character he is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Counsel?
My name's Jason Taylor, and my dad was in the hospital here at Cape. I live in Arkansas, so, you know, it wasn't a whole lot I could do. I could come and stay with him some, but, you know, I'd have to go back after a few days. I've got a job and family. After he got out, he was in the hospital for three weeks. He had to do IV antibiotics for five weeks, every day. A lady at the hospital recommended Mr. Israel in his business favors. I talked to him, seemed like a really nice respectable guy. I hired him to come get my dad every morning, make him get his antibiotics and take him back home. He was on time every day. At first, my dad couldn't walk, so we'd get him to the car, get him in a wheelchair, get him up to the third floor to get his medicine, get him back out, get him back to the car, and get him back home. I could count on him. I didn't have to be here, I knew he was going to get his medicine. The day I hired him, I asked him, well, you know, I'm going to pay you what you want, what you want, which wasn't much, you know, seven bucks to take him to the hospital, seven bucks to bring him back. Fourteen dollars a day. I mean, that's, that's a good deal. Can't beat that. And I asked him, well, if he needs to go by the store or something, take him by the store. He told me, hey, if he needs some food, I'll go get his groceries for him, I won't charge you nothing for that. He's a really nice guy, he's reliable, he was always on time, always did what he was supposed to do. And I'm just here as one of his clients, and, you know, I'm, I'm really proud of the job he done. Yesterday was the last day that my dad had to do his antibiotics, so I'm really pleased with him, and I think he deserves a chance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, we need to either have a motion for approval or denial or postponement if you want to research more. Counsel's pleasure. Do I have a motion?
I'm going to move we approve it. I think we ought to give the man a chance. I think he's, he's made some mistakes in the past, and I think he's changed his life, and I think we need to give him a chance.
Okay, we have a motion for approval by Fox and the second by Gard. Discussion?
I would agree that we should give him a chance. I mean, if you look at, I think that the time of the felonies makes a difference to me. If this had have been within the last year or two, or a larger number, or felonies involving anything violent or as, as is described in the ordinance, I think that would be a different case, but I would like more information about the trespass misdemeanor and, you know, assurance about the condition or any difference that might make in terms of the business. But I think we should give him an opportunity based on the character references we hear tonight and what I think is a record so far.
Other comments?
I think that we should give it to him because he's a great father, young man, has been through the storm that he's taken, and he, I'm a witness that he has changed his life, and he's doing what he can to improve his family and the community.
Okay. Any others? Seeing none. Bruce, let's do a roll call vote on this.
Bob Fox?
Yes.
Robbie Gard?
Yes.
Victor Gunn?
Yes.
Shelley Moore?
Yes.
Harry Rediger?
Name.
Charlie Zerl?
Name.
Does this have it?
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Wayne Bowen, I'm sorry. Wayne Bowen?
There wasn't an abstention? Okay. Do we have any other business coming before us? Have a motion to adjourn. Move to adjourn by Gunn. By Gard. Those in favor?